Time to bring this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. The time is 5:01. The date is July 7, 2025. Let's start with a roll call. Vance.
Charles Bradshaw.
Present.
Charles Pavelonis.
Present.
Lee Highsteed.
Present.
Royal Bartle.
Present.
Mike Bradshaw.
Present.
All are present.
Thank you for that. We'll invite anybody to offer a word of prayer at this time, even from the audience if they would care to. If not, then I will. Our Father in Heaven, we come before you at this appointed hour, and we thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve our community and pray that you will bless us with your Spirit, that we can do the things that are necessary for the benefit of the whole. And we pray for your guidance and Spirit to be with us, and we thank you for this community and the people that live in it and for all that's been done in our behalf, and we do this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that. We have a big meeting today, a lot of things to discuss, so we'll get right to it. Do we have? I don't see the minutes of our last meeting in here, Vance. Did we forget to attach those, or are they on a different page that I'm not seeing?
You know what? It looks like I forgot to attach those.
Okay.
My apologies.
So we will go through those next time. And then we will move into public comment. Is public comment where we go out of regular session, or is it a public hearing?
No, that's, that's a public hearing. Public comments.
So is there, is there anyone from the public that has anything to talk about other than what's on the agenda? That's what public comment is for. Please state your name.
Dale Bartle, 340 South Calvin Street. I won't be here for the rest of the meeting because I have a utility meeting to get to.
Okay.
So I just want to use this time to, to say that I support all of the rezoning that you guys are going to deal with tonight. The only concern I have is the stormwater issues that we're having with these new subdivisions. Take, take the subdivision up on the east end of Mojave. Whenever it rains, then all that water floods clear down to Central Street and all, all the way through town. So I wonder if there's a way we could probably put a guardrail on these projects, especially the commercial and the industrial to maybe retain the water on site somehow. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay, doesn't look like we have anyone else. So we will move into public hearing. We will close this general, general session at 5:04 and open up to public hearing. And we will start with zoning map amendment A. Anybody from the public that wishes to address that?
Good afternoon, Chairman Commissioners, Charles Hammond, Phil Vance. Appreciate the opportunity to just say a few remarks about this item. I'm checking the agenda to make sure I didn't jump the gun, but the general first public hearing is Watchman's Point, PAD, right?
Correct.
All right, trying to make this quick, and I appreciate the time of the commissioners. I appreciate the work the applicant has done to get it to this point. I just wanted to add a few remarks. First, I have a question and potential concern about a development agreement. Per town code, a development agreement is required at the time of PAD approval. I understand that Planning Commission's recommendation is not a final approval. That's done by the town council. I just wanted to highlight the importance of the development agreement with the PAD process. It is required and it is an important document. Would just like to check to see, or just generally ask, that the development agreement is part of the conversation and that it becomes reviewed by staff and legal counsel and any other consultants the town may deem necessary. It would be prudent for the town of Colorado City to review the PAD development agreement and have the development agreement finalized and have it move along with the PAD approval or consideration. The next item that comes to my mind is it, and I want to say this carefully because we have a, we have talked in the past about further refining our town's general plan. I understand that that process is getting started, so I'm excited about that. There are some things within this planned area development application that I think are inconsistent with our current general plan. In my mind, there are some things that this PAD development will be I'm hoping will also be in conflict with our future general plan, so I just wanted to bring up some concerns that I have in that relation. Another concern is that the current version of the, of the PAD, planned area development, is considerably different from what was presented in 2023 and earlier this year in 2025. The most recent version shows a clear pivot towards C3, commercial zoning and high-density residential. The specific zone is RM. It seems to me that there's been not a lot of discussion about this version of the plan with relation to, to the public. RM is the highest density zoning allowed in town. And if I, rough numbers, I think there's over 40 acres in this PAD of RM. And I'm, I'm a big fan of RM, so this is, it's not that I'm against RM. I, I think it's essential to our community. Also, just a little backstory, there is a special subcommittee created back in March to review the proposal in greater detail. Just a general question about whether there was any review or feedback from that committee with regards to the application, and, and if there is, it would be excellent to come to understand what that committee recommended. Yeah. And also, I, I've mentioned this already before, but I do think that just from a general, good planning perspective. I think that there is a room for opportunity in this application for better planning principles. That includes a clear phasing plan. Better context-sensitive transitions. When I say transitions, I mean the impact of development transitions from high-impact to low-impact. Also, the impact those transitions have with the surrounding neighborhoods. Essentially, it's the kind of concept where you have the high-impact commercial, and then you kind of have transition to lower-impact commercial, and then you have high-impact residential, and then transition into low-impact. Just the general planning principle of transitions I think could be better integrated into this plan. I already mentioned the high-impact density, what I, what I think is a little bit of a density overreach, and it, it's not because, because the total overall acreage is not in agreement with the total overall units. It's just that because we have so many acres of RM in this area of the town of Colorado City, that I would suggest that we create a better mix of products. Even, and I might have this wrong, but I, I believe even the smallest single-family residential is, is quite a bit different in this PAD plan than it was in past applications. So in summary, I'll just say that I think that there is room for improvement with this application. I am not against the development of this project. I'm excited to see movement. I'm excited to see opportunities. Nevertheless, I do think that we need to yield to the standards of good planning, to compliance, and possibly transparency to the public. And I would urge the commission to withhold the recommendation until these issues are publicly addressed and corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public on this particular agenda item? Okay, we will move into agenda item B. This is a zoning map amendment for five acres, parcel 404-5-45-002, changing from RE1A residential to R112, single-family. Is there anybody from the public that wants to address that one? And Vance, I forgot to ask if there was any written on the first one.
I have not received any written comments on any of these.
On any of them, okay. Nobody from agenda B? This is a pro, well, located on ta, north of township, approximately midway from SR389 to Redwood Road. So it's on the other side of the, the highway. Zoning, or the next one is item D, zoning map amendment, 10 acres of parcel 404-45-002. Those are the same one?
That it's all.
It's all one? So they're just trying to separate into smaller parcels?
Just in the process of being recorded down, but.
Okay.
Not completed yet.
Okay. I did see that, but I, I did overlook that. Located east of Redwood Road, approximately halfway between Arizona Avenue and Township Avenue from RE1A, residential estate to R112, single-family residential. Is, oh, I skipped one, didn't I? C. Zoning map amendment C, five acres of parcel 404-45-002, located east of Redwood Road, approximately halfway between Arizona Avenue and Township, from RE1A residential estate to R112, single-family residential. Any public comment on that one? Next item is item D. Zoning map amendment, 10 acres of par, of parcel 404-45-002, located east of Redwood Road, approximately halfway between Arizona Avenue and Township Avenue from RE1A, residential estate to R112, single-family residential. Are there, is there anybody from the public wants to address that one? Andy, come forward if you. All right, item E, zoning map amendment, 10 acres of parcel 404-45-002, located in the same area from RE1A, single-family estate to industrial.
Actually, this one's down on Township, close to, closer to 389.
Yeah, okay. Anybody from the public that would like to address this one?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners Vance, Charles Hammond. Again, I just had a few items that I thought were worth discussing in your ongoing conversations. One, one concern that I have, and I, and I think that it is, I think procedure is important. We have new land use ordinances, and I think we're kind of all learning this together. I'm, I'm so excited to see this kind of project happen, in this location especially. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the town. I am excited to see the economic opportunity and growth, job creation, services provided. I think that the development of this parcel is going to be a much better complement than the raw land acreage that's been held up, so in many ways, I'm, I'm very excited. When I say procedure, what I mean is with regards to subdivision and rezoning has just item for, for further discussion, and likely has already happened, but when you subdivide raw land into smaller parcels, which would be required for the rezone to take effect, so that you have individual parcels with its own unique zoning, you've got to go through the subdivision process. If, if you get an exception from that standard, you can do a minor lot subdivision of, you know, some version of that, right? But my, my question was, is did the breaking apart of, of this property, which is potentially eight different parcels, did that go through the subdivision process? And, and my, my last point on this is, we, we have a history of our Colorado City-Hildale industrial parks being near or on our highway corridor. I'm a big fan of industrial. I'm a fan of all products, so I'm excited to see somebody thinking about what is the future of industrial in the town of Colorado City. I, just on a personal level, a little bit sensitive to it being so close to our visual corridor. We have a, we have a history of, of why the current industrial park is where it is, so I, I don't object to that in any way. I know that in the past, the town has had a lot of conversations and recent work about transitioning the industrial park away from this highway corridor and designating a spot somewhere else in the valley that is perhaps better suited in its location for the impact that is industrial. So in the end, I, I am excited to see somebody thinking about industrial. I, I do think that this is the wrong location in our valley for industrial. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public on this item?
Hi, I'm Jerusha Darker, and as far as, like, the different tax dividing on that, I think that the wrong numbers did get written on when the state had put all the numbers up, but I do have a current one that has, each of them has their own tax on, so I think by the time you get it to city council, you'd have the right numbers on each or something. But also, right across the street from that is a big crusher plant. It is really, you kind of have to think, what would you put by a noisy crusher plant? If it wasn't, and then just maybe put something in, in line that says, hey, let's put up some nice brick walls. Let's put up nice stuff like that around it and make it doable that way. Just a thought.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item?
Mike, Mike Stewart, one of the owners of that property. We appreciate the feedback, because honestly, we want to do what's best for the community. And the feedback we've got from talking to a lot of people that there's a lot of people that have businesses out here and would like a place that they can park their trailers. We, we would like to keep it clean, keep it nice, that people can rent their businesses out of it, live close to, and not have to commute to other areas. So anyways, we will definitely keep the feedback in mind and, and hopefully feel like this is a good fit, and, and if it's not, we want you guys to tell us that, but that's what we're hoping it is, especially where it's across the street from. So we appreciate you guys considering it.
Any other comments on this particular item? Move on to item F. Zoning map amendment for the same parcel, 12 acres. R1A residential to R112, single-family residential. Anybody would like to comment on that one? Next item G, y'all, go ahead.
I actually can kind of speak for what a lot of these people, they just want to put in some just some nice housing that gives everybody a little bit larger lot. Sorry, I'm Jerusha again. But they want it, they want it to be a little bit more affordable housing, but not, I mean, just so you have a bigger acreage. That's why it's an R112, hopefully third acre, a lot of them. And just make it so that we can have some good housing for people to support the local school, because I think that would surely help LCAP to have some really nice new home subdivisions, and I kind of hope that we can put some dark sky and stuff around it if they're up to it, so I think just good affordable housing is what we need.
Thank you. Item G. 10 acres of the same parcel from R1 residential to R112, single-family, again. Item H. Same parcel, 60 and a half acres from R1 to, R1A to C3, regional commercial. Anybody from the public would like to comment on that one?
Evening, gentlemen. I'm Art Jeffs. Just wanted to comment on this rezoning, the C3. Just feel like it's a good fit down the highway to help bring in some good commercial long-term businesses to help broaden the traffic and industry in that area. So that's kind of why we planned that whole layout that way, all the way down the highway, so. Then we moved to industrial and a little bit closer to, like, remedies, so it's a lot more of an industrial-type area than a commercial-type area, so to make it more of a pleasant place, so. Just want to put that there.
Can you talk about the process you've gone through?
We will when we get to the next. Well, this is public comment. We'll talk to them about that in the
Okay.
in the next part.
That's what I was.
We'll have an opportunity to talk.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, item I. This is a zoning map amendment for the same parcel, 10 acres. RE1A residential to industrial IP. Anybody from the public would like to talk on this particular item?
My name is Jared Nickel. Just like Charles was saying, I, I'm a lot about procedure here. And it was mentioned during this that these actually have their own parcel numbers, is what was said. And these are all being presented as one parcel number. And with two of these being 10 acres, and one saying it's midway, and the other one saying it's halfway in between, is one of those things where with this, I don't think this, this was posted with a map to show what was being referenced to, and so I just wanted to mention, you know, just to make sure that it's been properly noticed and that you know, it's clear what it is, the parcels that, that are being rezoned, and, and I, I trust Vance that, you know, he's, he's done his due diligence and homework, but I just wanted to, to mention it just to make sure that that this has been done proper. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners Vance, Charles Hammond. Again, just one final thought about industrial zoning in this area, and I also just want to ask the commissioners to consider an, an idea or thought with relation to this area. It says industrial park, and then there's a parcel next to it that is also industrial park. I, I think it's just worthy of, of focus. There are other zones that are industrial that aren't just I, you know, industrial park. I think there are other opportunities for lighter impacts, and I, and I say that about the industrial park area, but I also would like to suggest the commissioners think about a mix of commercial zones instead of all of it being C3. Yeah, there's an enormous opportunity here with good planning that creates multiple commercial zones to distribute the business opportunities that could exist through various different commercial zones, and also possibly the different industrial, industrial and business and manufacturing zones. Just potentially splitting those up instead of having them all in one particular impact category. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there is nothing further, then we will close the public comment at 5:24 PM. And we will go into item number seven. Consider zoning map amendment for Watchman's Point PAD. Vance, will you please introduce this?
Okay, this particular project has been in the works since the fall of 2022. It's gone through quite a few iterations. It's been through a couple of work sessions with the town council and planning commission. We've used sunrise engineering to assist with the technical aspects of the review. And we feel like we're at the stage where we would like to adopt the ordinance establishing the PAD conditioned upon the finalization of the development agreement, which is, we've done a lot of work on that already, but it's still got a lot of work to do. And that's what we're here for. From the meeting earlier that Charles referenced, one of the things that came out of our meeting with the developers, and they, was that on that corner where it had quite a few different commercial options, they they rewrote that to just a a general commercial rather than so many specific things, because the mayor and others felt like that some of what they were proposing competed with what we wanted to do in the downtown district. So they've tried to be very responsive to the things we've given them and the feedback we've given them, and I believe there's people here from that development to answer questions also.
Okay, maybe you can answer a question for me, because I was surprised to see it on the agenda, because we have not had this meeting that we had talked about having with the city council at, after that original meeting. Do you know if mayor decided not to have that meeting, or?
Well, I know the mayor, myself. Matt, I know the mayor. I didn't know who all he'd talked to. I thought he'd talked to yourself and Charles.
But that meeting was never set up, is what I'm saying. So I'm just wondering if, if that was just something he decided not to do, or if you know?
I, I left that up to the mayor, and he followed that through. I didn't actually, wasn't involved in that. He brought the feedback back to me. The developers brought the feedback back.
Okay. Alrighty. Let's have one of your people come and address us, please. Yes.
Well, specifically to.
Please, please state your name for the record.
Todd Wimpy.
Todd Wimpy.
Yep, Watchman's Point. And just to address the first concern, there was put forth an idea to have a working group surrounding this project. We followed up with the mayor multiple times to set a meeting or to see exactly what that looked like and how that was going to happen. He came back to us with a bunch of feedback of conversations he had. And this is where a lot of these changes that, that Vance is referencing came from, as far as working more in a, a future tense to work with the plans that you all have for your town and, you know, basically keeping your your commercial where you want it, your town center where you want it, but then adding maybe other types of commercial that fit into the community that would be more suited on the outskirts over where, where we are. So there, you know, the project has gone through a lot of variations as I think every planned area development should, especially if developers are working closely with community and listening to them. It should change a lot before it goes through and gets final approval, and so we have changed a lot of things. So we do, or do have an updated PAD index. Although some of the density and areas have changed, the overall plan has done nothing but been refined to work with your guys' future plan. To work with your roads, your intersections, everything that ADOT has planned to do in those senses. So yeah, are there any other questions that I can answer? Concerns?
Any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Wimpy?
I have quite a few.
Okay.
I'm relatively new to the planning commission here in Colorado City, but I've been planning for 30 years.
Okay.
I frankly find this very, very hard to accept and on, on its face. There's just so much, so much ambiguity. Have you talked to ADOT about an access point?
Yes.
And have they, have, do you have a, a will serve or some predetermination that you can put an intersection there? Because frankly, I just don't think you can.
So the plans have actually been put forth by ADOT to improve intersections out here along the highway. Have you seen their plan by chance as far as
I.
what they're planning to do?
I actually have, and it doesn't include this intersection.
Yeah, so our main intersections don't necessarily fall on the highway out there.
Well, you've got one that lands right on top of the hill.
Yeah, so that's been changed to, again, per your guys' recommendations, that's been changed to a minor access that, that's as far as how our development plans go along, that's a long ways down the road, and so a plan for a major intersection there is, is not in the plan.
Well, I mean, that's, that's actually very good to hear, because I, I just think it's a terrible location, site distances, et cetera.
Yeah.
But, so then you're asking us to approve something that's not finished. And I feel like this is not finished.
So, okay, so for this community, a planned area development, development agreement is, is a big hurdle.
It is in any community. I've done.
Well, it isn't.
I've done them personally.
Yeah.
On the other, been on the other side of them, so I, I know how much work they are.
They're a lot of work.
They are, they are tons of work and hundreds and hundreds. They are. They are tons of work and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right. Yep, they are. And so the way, you know, according to the feedback we've gotten, they've chosen to kind of break this up and work through this. And so what we're working on right now is just the pad, right? Looking to go for a rezone on the property. So, which would then be followed by the development agreement, which that process is, you know, according to Vance, almost a completely different process that ties into the pad that that's where we figure out all the final details of what this looks like, how the infrastructure installs. And along with that, a very detailed plan, this was also brought up, of how we come into this and how we develop this out phase by phase, the infrastructure plans that go along with that and how we integrate into the community and how this all works. That would include, you know, ADOT's plans. That will include how traffic flows work and all this stuff. And I know you're new and I apologize, this is the first time that you've seen this, but we have given everybody a preliminary development agreement that is, with your knowledge and your expertise and your background, you look at that and say, whoa.
I read through it and I found it lacking.
Lacking. Okay, interesting.
Because, again, I've done development agreements.
Yeah.
So I know what needs to go in them. And there were quite a few things that I thought were missing. And it's for both you and the city. It's protection for both entities.
Sure.
You know, first of all, I didn't see any discussion about a, it looked like you've got a tank being proposed on BLM property. None of that discussion was in the development agreement. And that protects you to see if the city, because they need to take, they've got to go get an RP&amp;P lease from the BLM. And you can't do that, they have to. So that would protect you to add that into the development agreement. The drainage master plan, there was, well, let's talk about open space. So the open space was pretty loose. You know, who maintains it? Do you dedicate it to the city? Do you keep it? Does the HOA maintain it? None of that was pointed out in the development agreement. Another thing that really surprised me is a request for churches, schools, and public services to be counted towards open space. Never seen that happen in my entire life because they're not open space, they're owned by an entity. So that surprised me. Private water feature, swimming pools, things like that. Who provides water for those? How do you, do you bring water to this development? Are you, do you have a plan to maintain a water secondary or otherwise? That, none of that's discussed. And there was another one in there, and I don't know what the impact fees, and this is fairly standard language, the impact fees, but I don't even know if the city has an impact fee reimbursement statute. And if they don't, it would be incredibly irresponsible to enter into a development agreement that says we can, for you, because they don't even have, they may not have it on their statute. I don't know. Maybe Vance can speak to that. So those are just the concerns on the development agreement. And I have a lot of other concerns in the package because the drainage plan, frankly, I mean, it's too big of a project to do a drainage plan the way that it was put out, the rationale method. It's over 200 acres. And that's the property that you're developing, not, that doesn't include all of the watershed that's coming off of the hills and all of that. So the rationale method really, really surprised me that that was the method that was chosen and accepted by the city, frankly, as adequate because it is not adequate for this size of parcel, for this size of drainage. I really would like to see a concept plan. There was a discussion about, you know, how do you, what's the buffer? How do you transition between these pads or these, the color schemes, whatever the, you know, and even how, what is the transition? You know, what buildings, what lot sizes? I mean, when I've done these in my business, we have an entire sub-plan, a concept plan. Now, it can change. That's not the point. The point is, is it's been thought through. And I just don't think it's been thought through. Let's see. The design guidelines and standards, first of all, I didn't, there wasn't any guidelines or standards. You have every architectural style in the, on the book. The only thing you don't have in there is a castle. I mean, every architectural style on the planet was in this, what is the theme? What's the, what is the purpose? How are you going to build this? Do you just take it and let each homeowner build whatever they want? Where, it just, so those things concern me. And a major one, I didn't see any discussion about lighting specifications. And I don't know if we have a dark sky ordinance in this town, but I think we should.
They would like one. Yep.
And I think it's critical. And I think if the city doesn't, I would like it to see it in yours. And so those are some major, major concerns that I have going, moving this forward.
Okay.
So anyway, let's, so how would you, how would you address those?
Well, I think I'd address them by following the process that we've been recommended to follow. And so I think in a project like this, since it's a 15-plus year project, we eventually have to get to a point whether we decide whether or not we're going to partner on the project. And so as a developer, there's two ways we could do this. I can come in basically phase by phase and just say, hey, I want to come and rezone this and I want to put this in there. And we could do it that way. You know, I've done lots of projects that way. And in a sense, that's what we're doing or you guys are doing with a lot of these other things that are kind of going on. Is that the best way to plan?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I appreciate what you've done. I appreciate that you're bringing it in as the planned development. I just would like to see it a little bit more robust.
No, absolutely. And I think this is the first step in the process is to, like I said, come and basically figure out if we have a project. Is this something that we can fit in your community? Does it mesh well? You know, and how can we work with you? And so if we get a pad approval, which then is tied to a development agreement, that is a process that we have to work through to get to the point where you feel comfortable, we feel comfortable because I totally understand the risk I'm taking as a developer. It's big. You know, it's big. And so whether, you know, if I don't cross my Ts and dot my Is, you know, one little tiny change in a development could bankrupt me. And so I think what you're seeing is a process that we've been working through to try to get to a point of understanding and knowing, okay, is the pathway forward? Or do we need to basically just start over, try something different? And so, again, according to the feedback we've got, this is where we're at, is getting a pad approval and then really honing in on the development agreement, which would then be looked at by the focus group and would be looked at by all of you and then coming together on that agreement. And those details need to be in that agreement.
Well, I guess my concern is this is the only time we get to have a discussion about what this, what this looks like for the future of the planning in this community. If you, once you get your agreement and your zoning, you don't have to come back to us.
Well, we do. We have to come back phase by phase. We have to get everything approved phase by phase.
That's true. But I'm saying you've got, you've got a vesting document that is just wholly inadequate, I feel like.
Well, the document will change.
I know, that concerns me.
Will be shored up.
That concerns me.
Well, what I mean to say is the development agreement is not final and it's not tied to this pad approval.
That concerns me.
Okay.
And in fact, it never happens anywhere other jurisdiction I've ever seen. The development agreement comes through and is part and parcel. Now, again, we are a recommending body. We don't get to sign the development agreement, but we certainly get to have influence on some items that are in it.
Sure, absolutely.
So.
Well, this is, this is a change from the feedback we've gotten before, so.
Well, I'm new.
I know, that's okay. That's completely fine.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Wimpy? Okay. We will entertain a motion.
I motion that we table this item until we have further discussions with. I would like to see it with both a combined effort. Maybe it's committee, I don't know. I'd like to just, and I am willing to be a part of the discussion if it's helpful. But I am motioning to table this until we can come to a better understanding on the entirety of the package. Based on, and these are based on the comments that I had. And if you're interested, I'll email them to you.
Circle.
So we have a first to table the motion to consider zoning map amendment for Watchman's pad. And we, by Commissioner Bradshaw, Michael Bradshaw. We have a second by Commissioner Pavlunas. Vance, we probably ought to have a roll call.
Well, can we have discussion?
Yes, absolutely. Discuss.
And this is probably more for staff than, so we did have a meeting with the developer, the mayor, building department, all the departments were there represented.
Whole city council.
I got a clear understanding, and obviously it was wrong, that we were going to have an ad hoc committee created for these types of discussions in between that initial meeting and presentation and then the official part of these starting to come to us and then to council. Do you know what happened to that?
That was the question I asked.
I know.
He doesn't know.
Well, can we get it in the minutes that we, so that just didn't happen? There's no input from the other departments, our committee, just discussions on the side that aren't documented at all?
I would certainly revise my motion to include an opportunity to have a renewed discussion on that committee and see if we can't put that together and include that in the motion, that it would be a value add to the planning commission to have that.
How would you reword that?
Good question. I would probably just motion again, or revise my motion to say, table until we can have a formal discussion either via committee or
An ad hoc.
An ad hoc committee to create a more robust finished document.
Including the developer.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, all included.
Okay, so we have a revised motion by Commissioner Michael Bradshaw. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Pavlunas. Any other discussion? Vance, let's have a roll call, please.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Carl Pavlunas?
Yes.
Royal Bartle?
Yes.
Charles Bradshaw?
Yes.
The High Steed?
Yes.
So the motion carries to table this until this committee can be formed to further address some of these concerns that we have.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Who would be point person to set back committee up and to schedule meetings with?
That would be the mayor.
I think I better take it.
That would be Vance.
It's probably Vance.
So we'll have staff will put that together. Okay? Appreciate your input on this, on this item.
And again, I appreciate your patience. I'm actually genuinely excited about the opportunity of growth in the community. And so I hope, I hope that what I say didn't dissuade you from moving forward because I'm really excited. But I just, I just want to, I just am looking for a little more formalized, robust, finished package.
Appreciate the comments and concerns. And I hope, you know, as I've said since the beginning, like, we're going to be much better off to work with you than try to fight any issue. So we'll make it happen as long as, you know, we can put our heads together and get it done in an adequate time, amount of time, then we're all for it.
Okay, perfect. Okay, move on to Agenda, Agenda Eight. And Vance, since how these are all one parcel, just kind of introduce the whole thing before we get started into it. We'll take a motion on every single one of them unless, but let's just introduce them all at the same time, if that's all right.
Okay. Yes, this was a project brought to us a few months back by Art Jeffs and Jerushia as they were purchasing this property. And they had met with us, the staff, several times on how best to lay this out. And so, and when I put this packet together, the county map had not been updated yet. So I didn't have those individual parcel numbers.
Okay.
Which she has now provided. That parceling was done out as part of the sale from State Trust land as it was engineered.
So is it not one big parcel then?
No, each one of these
Has their own parcel?
Has their own parcel number.
Okay.
Is it easy enough for you to associate those with the letters as we approve?
I don't know if I've, I can try, but it's kind of hard to read.
Can you tell me what the parcel number, will you be able to tell me what the parcel numbers is for each one then?
Yes. Okay, the first one, I was just starting on that, is a 404-45-0109, which is, let's see, that is five acre parcel. So that is 404-45-1210. That was the residential. So that one is 404-45-009. 11 is 404, I believe that's 45, I guess they're all 45.
Probably.
008. 12. Just today, properties of 10 acres. Jerushia, you're going to have to clarify which one this is. There's that, these four little ones.
Well, we talked from Mesa, their map, it's kind of a tough time. That's why they've been struggling with that. Updating.
This shows four little parcels out there instead of one. So this is going to be 615 and 13. So we'll have to clarify the sizes of each acre. Each acre, I bet. Add up to 10.
Is that a sign or what?
Like you just said, yes, or what?
Sign that the county map's acting normal. The 60 acre piece is 07. The other 10 acre, Jerushia has also put out as a part of the 60 acres or the 50. It'd be the 10 acres of your last one for industrial.
Yeah, that's still part of that.
Part of the 07 parcel. Okay, so it'd be a portion of 07.
So, okay.
So what they're looking for right now is, of course, just the zoning recommendation. And each of these, as they develop, will be responsible for going through all the and each of these, as they develop, will be responsible for going through all the subdivision processes.
Okay, so do you, is there anybody that would like to address these? And, you know, so number eight, is there anybody that's representing you on these that would like to address these?
That one's the Heber Bartle.
Well, maybe we could just have a kind of a discussion about
The whole entire property.
The whole idea and the concept behind what
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Are you, can you talk to all of them?
Yes, I can. I've talked to Heber personally, he said he's up in Wyoming.
Okay.
I'd represent his parcel here tonight.
So just talk to us about the whole project, even though we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to
Motion each one.
Motion each one, because they're separate parcels.
Okay. So, as this development came together, this parcel, basically, just a group of investors come together to get this purchase of this land, and it was broken up into these parcels, and then we recommended what their uses for the parcel, what the owners of the parcels wanted to do. So in Heber's case, he plans on building like five or six lots for him and his family, and move back to town. So he's up in Wyoming right now, looking for a way to get back home. Levi Jessup, the 12 acre, R112 right on the corner, him and his brothers are gonna bring in a development, are, they're planning third acre lots or bigger, and he's already done a bunch of houses around town already, so that's his plan, and I told my representative tonight, because he's up in North Dakota. There's also Petro Holdings, Mike Stewart's here, he can represent those two parcels, which is
Which ones are those?
There's the 10 acre industrial parcel right across from Remedy.
Okay.
And then also the 10 acre residential, just north of 12 acre of Levi Jessups, which is only
Oh, okay.
So, you can represent those, and then a five acre parcel just north of Redwood Street. Lamoyne Bartle is the owner of that parcel, he's basically gonna build like five or six homes there for his family, his mom, and make it a personal type development, and he's quite aware of that, but he was gonna try to be here tonight, but he's in Salt Lake. Then, I represent the residential just north of that, which is basically gonna be third acre parcel of residential, my kids are gonna help build, build them some homes and build some development there, so that's the understanding on that part. And then the C3 basically is to help walk through and then bring in some industry, build the economy here, that's kind of been our goal, sort of the last eight years we've been back here, to help build the economy so we can sustain and make a place for our kids. So, any other questions?
Any questions?
Yes, I do have a couple, maybe. So, what was the reasoning behind just a blink, a big C3 as opposed to doing some different kind of commercials?
So we sat down and read through like C1, C2, C3, and looked at what the variation was, type of businesses we would like to see in those areas, and that's why we put industrial down far south, and kind of recommended if we could bring something more like movie theaters, you know, types of small business development, I mean like professional business loops type things in those areas. C3 fit all those categories a lot better than the other ones. So, we're not planning on building each building, we're planning on bringing those type of businesses into town and give them a place to set up.
So do you currently have any interested parties that, so, for instance, is there any uses currently planned?
The first, our first step is basically to put in some 50 by 100 foot buildings, and bring some small commercial type repair shops, tile companies, stuff like that, and give these guys a place to start their small businesses. And that's gonna be like our Plan One, which is basically the northern part of this development. And then in the meantime, we're gonna, we gotta develop Arizona, we gotta bring sewer all the way up there and get to those next steps. We'd love to see, you know, hotels and all that cool stuff, and we're still reaching out, see if we can find some of those and get those nailed down right now, but.
And it is a concern, you know, this is a highway corridor, you know, and it is a beautiful highway corridor, and it would be, I would love to see a hotel there, I think that's perfect use. Car shop kind of, I wish there wasn't, I wish there wouldn't be a car shop along the highway.
We wanna put like, we personally want to build ourselves, it'd be like a tag and go car wash next to the
Sure.
Next to the hotel and stuff like that, and like a family cafe, and so it complements a hotel, because we need a hotel. I mean, every time we do anything around here, we need a hotel. So our first push is
Every weekend.
We've reached out to four different companies that do hotels, we have three people interested, so we are just, if we can have everything sitting, you say, here's your dirt, please come. And we have talked to ADOT about encroachment permits, done a Google video to them, and have a relationship with them to do encroachments for each business as the highway grows, and then it'll gradually widen and include all those encroachments step by step. So, that's the plan for the highway entrance for each one of those businesses at this point, so.
That concerns me, actually, a lot. You've got a frontage road, it seems like that's a great access point.
Yeah, Arizona's a great access point. That's, we're just, we're just praying that we can get a stop by there, so.
Yeah, we've got, I mean, obviously, we've got to do intersection improvements, otherwise this corridor is, it's a worse disaster.
Yep, oh, for sure.
But, but I would hesitate to want to see, you know, driveways off the highway.
Oh, yeah, I would love to see it turn into a state street like Utah, that would actually be the dream.
No, it wouldn't. I, I'm against that, actually.
It just gets you so much business access.
I know, and it's
I think that your concept of
I love the frontage road, actually.
Having your frontage road access, to me, is way better.
The frontage road is great, because it gives us both sites for commercial and the way to run the sewer to everybody.
Yeah.
Can't play with ADOT on the side of the dirt.
Right, and I would recommend that we have all the driveways on the frontage road and none on the highway. That would be, that would, I mean, that's how I would see it working best.
It might just get that way, so we still have to get through all that.
Right.
So, we're just trying to
It's doable, for sure.
Yeah, we're just trying to entice
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a 60 foot wide, yeah.
Does this other access kind of in the middle, is that road already there?
Yeah, that's, no, that's
There's Arizona, the one below that is not there, that is going to be a sewer access for our second development.
Township is there.
You have Township, and then you have Uzona.
You have Arizona right there.
But that's Arizona.
Big one right in the middle.
Oh, Arizona, that one is there.
Yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the school access.
That's the school.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And that one needs improved.
Yeah.
Of course, all the intersections need approved, but that's a different problem.
With the light in there will make a big difference.
So the state legislature did approve in the budget, a traffic light at that location, it's not in the works anymore. They approved
The funds?
Yeah. 1.5 million, I got notice from Representative, no, Senator now, no, Representative Biasucci, that the first light is indicated at that intersection, and there was still working on the second location between Airport Road or Central, but on the highway. So this one is in writing.
And we've been talking with Downstate and ADOT for about six years, because we jump that highway every day, and our kids jump that highway every day, because we're the only few guys on the west side. So, that's been a concern for us a long time, we've been working towards, so.
That's definitely a concern. Let's talk about the industrial, so is there a user for that, is that slated? And then maybe, and maybe before I ask that question, Vance, is that remedy property and the pride property, is it zoned industrial, or are they just
Yes, it was, when we, when we established the initial zoning map, we zoned as things were currently used as much as possible, so yes, those are industrial.
So those are zoned IP?
Yes, those are zoned industrial.
I mean, I do like the fact that it's not on the highway.
And what about that next lot, south, or west, east of
What are you, industrial right against residential?
East of Remedy, is that one IP as well?
Yes, I don't recall if it comes
But you're
To the highway, or if it just comes to the edge of the
So is there not a zone for that?
We can't even do discussions.
Without looking at the map, I kinda think we held it back from the highway and kept the highway commercial.
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to go look at the map again, but, okay. Okay, let's have yours again.
Sorry, sorry about that. I just was concerned about industrial right against residential. I know that they're planning to do light industrial. This lot with Hebers is right adjacent to industrial. But I don't know if the approval can come with stipulation as light approval, or light industrial, or how that works. Or if there's some other
Well, we can, we can have that discussion maybe when we get, yeah.
Okay.
That is a question that I have, is
Also mirrored what's on the other side of Township.
Right.
That's, that's kind of Almost, almost exactly, because it's residential on the other side of, well, they're proposing residential on the other side.
Right, right, and it will be something coming up.
That's the one, the other one on the other side is the one that Mr. Zitting is proposing to put in like 10 million, I mean, a few, quite a few units.
400. 400.
I saw that.
So this is, I mean, I actually am, this is a lot of commercial, I'm not saying it's the wrong place for a commercial, but this is, this adds a lot of commercial to the corridor. And, you know, I mean, obviously, you're not gonna, you're not gonna develop this in five years, but
Yeah, it's thinking five to eight year plan, basically, to get the lots available and as quick as it turns, basically, so. We just, we tried to start a business five years ago and could not find a building anywhere, and it just was like, what the hell? So, that's when we started looking, and that's got us where we are today.
Okay.
My thought too, a little bit on that, we had a lot of people that kind of felt like, well, maybe you should come in and just throw in all the townhouses like Henderson and everything, when people were looking at different properties. But when we actually, because we've been looking at this property and working towards it for about six years, we kind of felt like that the town for small business is just kind of been landlocked. So, if somebody wants to start just a little electrical company, or a carpet company, or anything like that, where do they go? So they all go rent in St. George. So I kind of felt like, okay, yes, it is a lot of C2, or C3, or C whatever, it is commercial there, but what does the town need? Does it need apartments lining that like Henderson? Does it, does it need places that can provide jobs? Obviously, it's a 10, 15 year projection to get it all in, but what do we need? We need places where our kids can have nice homes in good little subdivisions, and hopefully we can implement dark skies. We need places that you can start a business, you can park your tool trailers, and provide jobs for our kids getting out of school. That's been one really tough thing, is where do the 18 year olds work? So they all go somewhere out of town and work, because somebody rents, you know, a little metal building out of town and provides the job for them. So, in reality, yes, it is a big chunk, but what is the best suited to be right there? Some that can bring jobs and business and tax revenue, obviously, is kind of my thought on it, so, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have questions for Mike Stewart?
That's what I was gonna go to, his next, which is, which ones, Mike's or
Is the today's properties, it's
Yeah, number nine
Petro Land.
And 10, right?
Nine and 10?
Nine and 10, I think so.
Yeah.
Actually, 10 and 11.
10.
10. 10 and 11. So you, so you have the 10 acre parcel, he has the 10 acre parcel, and the two 10 acre parcels, is that right?
One's 12.
No.
Well, one's industrial and the other is
Oh, and residential, okay.
And nine
I believe it's 10 and 11.
Okay.
It's actually 11 and
No, it's 10 and 11.
10 and 11.
10 and 11?
Yeah, one is, the first one is residential, and the other one is industrial.
Industrial, yeah.
Oh. So you don't own both industrial parts?
No.
Lots?
No.
Just the one.
Who owns?
Is there?
So you, so, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so what, what's your ideas for that, gravel pit?
We're
I'm kidding, kidding.
With the biggest hole we can put there.
Yeah.
Loudest equipment possible. Honestly, we've, because I'm not as familiar with this community, even though I have multiple business partners from here, honestly, for years, I've been saying, hey, there's so much potential out here, let's, let's go out there, and I finally got them on board, and honestly, this fell under our lap when they reached out to us, and we've been excited to be a part of this. So, I've got more feedback than all the developments I do in other towns, of like, hey, what does this community need? And reaching out to people, the mayor and Vance, and exactly what she got up and said, it's like, hey, we got a lot of employees that are all commuted, like, they are trying to live here, rent here, but they want to buy, and they're commuting into town to work, which if we can give them a place to work, run a business, flooring shop on that commercial, this industrial, we've already reached out, trying to reach out to a few people and say, hey, before we even split this up into five, six lots, probably at most, we want them to be one or two acres lots, but if there's somebody that wants the whole parcel, to run their, their whole business, or their yard, we don't know exactly yet, so we want to leave our options open, and then we thought mimicking exactly what was across the street was the best, but I know there's a lot of people that'd rather store their trailers and sort of pull everything to town, so.
What about the medication between the residential? Is there a standard for, in the city, for a block wall or some?
I mean, we would want to do a block wall, but by default, just
There is some, that addresses that to some degree, I don't remember how robust it is.
There has to be some kind of a screened wall of some sort between industrial and residential.
Yeah, I would expect that.
I would assume you guys can require that when we're developing the, getting the final plot
That's what I would assume.
It's already in our stuff, I mean
In the ordinance.
Stuff you'd have to do.
That would be an absolute must.
Yeah. Now, we can recommend, you know, but
Not, well
There's minimums that have to be done.
Absolutely.
We've had enough of the 12 foot tall walls, so.
Want something aesthetically pleasing, for sure, but obviously, I want to be cautious on that very much, so.
Okay, any other, any other things on these? Okay.
Hey, thanks so much for you guys'
Let's go to Agenda Number Eight, Item Number Eight, then, an entertaining motion to amend zoning map amendment for parcel 404-45-010, from RE1A to R112.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to recommend to the city
Recommend to the city, yes.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a recommendation by Commissioner Bartle, and a second by Commissioner Steed. Look, we can probably just do a
Voice.
Aye.
Unless there's a descending vote, then we don't have to do a roll call.
Okay, are there any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, is unanimous. Number nine, zoning map amendment, 404-45-012, from RE1A, resident, residential to R112, single family, we have a motion for this one.
I'll make a motion, will you approve?
Recommend.
Recommend.
Okay. Recommend, it has been recommended, we have a motion for recommendation for approval, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Motion by Commissioner Steed, second by Commissioner Pavloneis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is unanimous. Number 10, amendment for 404-45-009, from RE1A to R112, I will make a motion to recommend to the city that we approve this change, do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a first by Commissioner Bradshaw, Charles Bradshaw, second by Commissioner Pavloneis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is unanimous. Number 11, zoning map amendment, parcel 404-45-008, from RE1A, single family residential to industrial IP, do you have a motion for that one?
I'll make a motion, we recommend.
I'll second it.
There's a motion to recommend for approval, and a second, motion by Commissioner Steed, second by Commissioner Bartle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, 404-45-011, from RE1A to R112, consider a motion on that one.
I'll make that motion, to recommend.
Motion is made to recommend to the city council to approve this, I will second it, so, motion by Commissioner Pavloneis, seconded by Commissioner Charles Bradshaw, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, I did Number 13, I did not get the parcel number on that one.
Nor did I.
We weren't able to parse that one out of the map yet, so we'll clarify it before it goes to City Council.
Okay. So, this is to consider the amendment for parcel 404-45-something? Zero, probably something, something, right? To be clarified before it goes to City Council.
Probably six, based off the numbers.
Yeah, based off the numbers. I'll recommend.
Okay, so we have a rec, a motion to recommend to the City Council for approval. Any second?
I'll second.
So, a motion by Commissioner Bartle, seconded by Commissioner Steed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a parcel number for number 14?
That's 007.
That would be that one I didn't get, 007.
007, I missed that one. Okay, considers map amendment for parcel 404-45007 from RE1A to C3, commercial. I will make a motion to recommend to the city for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
So, a motion by Commissioner Charles Bradshaw, second by Commissioner Pavlone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 15, do we have a, one for that one?
This is a, in a proportion of 007.
007, okay. So, they're splitting that lot, then, I guess, and changing the zone, right?
7A.
Yes.
So, this is also 404-45-007 from residential R1A to industrial. Do we have a motion to change for a recommendation or denial on this one?
I recommend, or I, make a motion, we recommend.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Motion is recommended by Commissioner Steed, seconded by Commissioner Bartle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this item number 16, Vance, will you please introduce this one?
Okay, this is a preliminary plat for Academy Town Home subdivision. This is a seven-unit townhome located on Academy Avenue and Willow Street.
Is there anybody here to represent this?
Steve Thomas Timpson is here to-
Okay, Mr. Timpson?
Good evening, evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Thomas Timpson, and I'm representing Nolan Jessup on this project. He's the property owner. Essentially, this is an existing lot, it's .71 acres, and we're looking to subdivide it into seven units so that he can go build a townhouse building. So, with each of those lots, we're planning to install utility services, so water, sewer, and gas, and all the likes, so, uh, that's the gist of what we're trying to do, so happy to take any questions.
So, these will be a four-cell property?
Yes.
Uh, zero lot line, four-cell townhome?
Yep, yeah, so we'll have a firewall between each of the units and the townhomes, so.
Okay, so, I read through this before, but I forgot, I don't remember recalling this, but on your lighting, um, are you doing dark light?
Dark, dark sky.
Dark sky, whatever. Is that in your proposal?
We haven't spec'd anything like that necessarily.
Okay. There's no rule that you have to have it, but we would certainly recommend it.
Our zoning code recommends it, but we haven't really adopted a formal dark sky ordinance yet.
Can definitely suggest it to Nolan. I think, I mean, he, I think he'd be in favor of something like that, so.
I mean, anymore, the fixtures aren't anymore money. They used to be a little bit of an upcharge, but nowadays, almost all fixtures are dark sky compliant.
Okay. Yeah, and I haven't really been too involved with them on the building design, so, but I'll definitely-
Encourage that.
Yeah, encourage that.
Have you spoke to any of the neighbors around, or is this too preliminary?
So, when I, when I started this project, then it had already been rezoned to R2 to allow for this development.
Yes.
Right, this was rezoned in, in June of 2022. There was, at that time, the discussion was to bring the sewer up Willow. It went through around and around in the planning stages that way, stalled out for a while. They went back and changed their, the plan with the utilities to bring the sewer up Academy.
Utility plant.
On Willow, so now we can go pave Willow Street.
Perfect.
It's eroding. That's why we hadn't paved it yet, was we just wanted to, didn't want to pave it and then dig it right back out.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, this, this project's been in the works for a while and just kind of working at Mr. Jessup's pace, I guess.
So, that has been installed up Academy?
No, not yet.
Or plans are?
They will be. The, uh, the utilities are approved by ADQ, their plans, they do have the will serve letters now from the utilities with the ADQ approvals.
We're working on, we're working on the approvals, but we do have the will serve letters.
Right.
We're gonna, we're hoping to submit this week.
They'll have those approvals before they dig the street up, the requirement.
Do you, have you, uh, are you going to do any, any retention of stormwater, or do some LID? How do you, how do you plan to manage stormwater at all?
Right now, we're just planning to drain out to the street. The city ordinance technically doesn't require detention unless the project is over two acres. So, considering that, we're just planning to go right into the street with it.
It'll just shoot right into Willow and go down.
We have that page.
That is a flood-
Yeah, Willow is a pretty major floodway.
Yeah, that's true.
So.
Any other questions for Mr. Timpson? Okay. We'll entertain a motion to consider preliminary plat for Academy Town Homes.
All, all motion that we recommend?
For, for approval?
For approval.
Okay. Do we have a, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Michael Bradshaw to recommend for approval, seconded by Commissioner Bartle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any approved? Any opposed? None opposed, commit, uh, motion carries. Okay, number 17, informational summaries.
Okay, the next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 4th. And also, myself, Commissioners Carl Pavlone and Royal Barlow are registered for the APA Arizona Planning Conference in September. Any of the others would care to, we can still facilitate that.
Okay. Yeah, exactly.
Can I have a general question?
Absolutely.
Vance knows, is the federal government still allow TIFs? They still create TIFs, tax incremental financing for the development like Watchman's Point?
Yeah.
Or this one?
Yeah.
Is that a, is that a size requirement or type of development?
I don't think so, as far as I know. You think you can do it, and I don't, it's really based on what the city does, isn't it?
I'm not very familiar with that process at all.
It goes through the cities, we just, we've, we've done them a couple of times on some developments, and I'm not sure about the size.
Arizona's got a lot of real weird requirements.
I bet they do.
Not as generous as some other states that way.
They, they aren't, but-
Is that a state?
But it's very common.
It's a federal program, isn't it?
It's, no, it's state. So, each state has to adopt their policies.
Okay.
Cities can, can revise them and utilize them, they don't have to. But we have done those, and the TIFs and the PIDs.
On the PIDs side?
Uh, we haven't done them on in the Arizona side, my company, but we've done them in Idaho and several in, in Utah.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's, I'd say, that's a good funding mechanism. It's a good funding mechanism.
Right.
I like it. There, if they're, if they're done appropriately, I think, I've seen some get, get sideways. So, they have to be administered by the city, and so the city, I don't know what stipulations the cities have done on those.
Yeah, I don't think we've done any, anything like that yet, so.
We've never, at least, we've never had a collective, uh, set of investments like these.
Well, there was a time, there was not a planning and zoning either, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's a fairly recent.
That's a new development in the grand scheme.
I think the only, I mean, if we're done with that discussion, but yeah, I do, I actually am pretty familiar with those. And they're good. The only thing that if I get, if you'll indulge me, I'd like, I would like to have a discussion or, or work on revising the ordinance to include a dark sky, a fairly robust dark sky ordinance in the city. I, I think it's, I mean, we, we live in such a fantastically gorgeous area, it's criminal to destroy it with light.
Yeah.
So, I-